Good morning. Welcome. I called order the June 9, 2020, meeting of the Slayton County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wies.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please join me in honoring our flag with a salute and followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the citizen input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business.
Approved consent agenda as presented.
Today's consent agenda is approval of prior, consists of approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of counts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any items that commissioners wish to remove or amend? Hearing none, the consent agenda will be stand as approved.
Item number one, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization Incorporated presentation with Mitch Robinson, the executive director.
Good morning Mitch.
Good morning.
We're going to ask you use the podium. We'll probably get a different setup here pretty soon on that one.
Good morning. Pleasure to be with you all this morning. We've been working with the company for several months off and on and have the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about it. We've got the owner and his contractor here today, but we're not quite ready to go out publicly yet with all the information unless he makes that decision as we go through. But it is a project that's looking at, they own the property, it's 22 acres, south, South Ninth Street, right across from the former Phillips operation. It's just to the south of the last hotel, so it is in the county. This would be a company that would sell and service tractors, ATVs, off-road equipment, and have several of the national top names that we currently do not have here in Salina and Slayton County. So we've had people coming by our office over the last couple of years say, oh, we need this certain brand and, and I don't see any orange here, but the color they use a lot is, is orange, so that'll give you a little idea of which, which company I'm talking about. But they're looking at, as I said, the 22 acre site, they would take six acres of the property, develop that, and then develop, have two other sites out of that 22 acres that would be available to sell, so they'll have to go through that, that process. They've been working with the city, talking to them about utilities. They were looking at about a, about a $2 million investment in this, in this operation and would employ eight to 10 people over the course of the first year. They would have obviously technicians, service people, parts people, and then then sales. So a lot of their sales are going to be on the ATVs, the side-by-sides, jet skis, so that'll be the biggest part. And of course, those are predominantly taxable, sales tax, so on the farm equipment, as you all who do farming, you know, those are exempt, so. They've, they've come before, previous location, south of us, they were able to get a 100% abatement on their personal property taxes for the 10-year. Phil and I have talked about this, there is no policy in place. Is that still correct? Have you found anything? Okay. So, you know, the city's policy does not address retail sales. They only have industrial warehousing, there's a couple other exemptions for that, so this would be a little bit unusual. Some communities want to address, attract more retail. Obviously, a good job is a good job, so these positions will probably be, your technicians all be over $20 an hour and, yeah, and they, then your salespeople have a base salary and then commission as well, so. At this point, I don't, do you want to say anything at this time? I know it's hard for you not to, not to talk, you're kind of a quiet guy. This is, this is Lee Fein, Lee's the owner of the company and lives in McPherson County.
Yeah, Lee Fein here, businesses, Agro Center. The, what we're looking to bring in here to Salina is Kubota along with Can-Am, side-by-sides and the watercraft, and along with that, we'll end up also bringing MacDon, which is a MacDon combine, self-propelled windrowers, hay equipment from the Kubota line also. So those are the items that we're looking to bring in here. There is quite a bit of construction going on in Salina and surrounding counties, so Kubota is a very sought-after brand and product. To kind of give you guys an idea, that the Can-Am product line, we're the largest Can-Am dealer in Kansas and Nebraska right now, and one of the top five in the entire region of about 15 states. So, and that's our store in Hutchinson. This store here in Salina will be even larger yet for the powersports side of the business, just because we have a larger pool of people to pull from in this area. Like he said, we're going to be bringing the jet, would like to bring jet skis also. Those, every, every one of those are taxed. All the, every four-wheeler is taxed, irregardless if you're in ag or if you're a consumer, and then the side-by-sides will be taxed if you're a consumer or if you're ag, they're non-taxed. If you guys ever had a chance to look at our store in Hutchinson, it was just built, it's two years old now. It, which, it's the nicest place that you're going to have in the county. So, we don't skimp, we don't cut corners. If we did, I wouldn't have a business that's the way it is today. The facility we're looking at is roughly about 18,000 square feet in size. It will look very retail, consumer-based store. You guys got any questions for me?
I guess one question I would have, you've been in discussion with the city as far as utilities, when it comes to water and sewage, what are you looking for as water supply? Are you looking for city water?
Yes, we would love to have city water if we could.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but to tie into the city water, doesn't the land need to be annexed into the city?
I'm getting a little bit outside of my area here, so.
Commissioner, from what I understand, they do have a rate for out of, out of city limits utilities, so. I don't know if you've had that discussion yet with, with the city staff or?
We have not gotten there with city staff. Most municipalities will allow you to tap into their city utilities and pay an additional fee if you're in the county, but you're close by.
Okay, we're going to have to step to the microphone, guys. We're in a public meeting and we're on TV and we.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to make space and follow the rules. My name is John Richardson, I'm a partner with Richardson Brothers Construction out of Hutchinson. Most municipalities will allow you to hook up to city water and sewer and pay an additional fee for being outside the city limits, but you control the costs of constructing that line. The city usually, that's on you to hook up to our stuff. We have not gotten that far with the city, but from what I understand, that is an option. One thing we also talked about is the water that we intend to run and the sewer we intend to run is enough to, is large enough to supply more than just his store if other properties, if other people decided to develop on that lot for other businesses, for fire suppression, the fire plugs, things like that, so we'd have that ability for future development on that same lot.
Can I ask a question here? Is that, in, in your statement, you said something about you will be handling the, the Kubota line of, of the hay equipment?
Yeah, their hay, their hay equipment also.
And their four-wheelers and, and all that line? Will you be handling their tractors and all the other lines?
Yeah, we, we have the full, the entire product offering from them. They've, they're giving that entire product offering to us. A lot of dealers, they will not offer the entire product line, they'll only give a bit and a piece of it. They're going to give us the entire product line.
Does that include Ray and Brian?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Got to get the hometown people in.
And, and another quick question here, and trying to split this land up and, and I, I don't know, have you, since this is just in the preliminary stages, you've not been in front of the planning and zoning committee to find out if it's even possible to change these lots and split the other two lots out? Or has it?
Before, back in early March, before everything happened, we actually had a design review team meeting. I was not there, I called into the meeting, and we discussed how the lot would be potentially split up into four parcels with Agro Center probably keeping the, the south two parcels for ever and ever, and the north two being potential parcels that could be sold off to other businesses in the future, but plotting it out that way.
Okay, thank you.
I think when we talked last week, Phil and I had just some, you know, initial discussion and, and he said you all had some questions about it, and then when I mentioned that to Lee, Lee said, well, I'd be more than welcome to, you know, happy to come up and, you know, so kind of like straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, and we get the answers directly from the owner and his contractor, so. Still early stages, there'll be some things that we've obviously got to get worked out, but I think it's good we're able to bring them here today and let you meet Lee and, and learn about his company, but they, I have been by their facility in Hutchinson, it is first-class operation, so, you know, this is something that you see on backs of trailers going down the road every day, people with their, their side-by-sides and their other, I've got a four-wheeler in my garage, so it's a, it's definitely a, a product that's being sold all over. And from what our discussions, Lee brings people in from, as he said, multi-states, talking, selling, selling their products, so they've got a good, good facility.
My questions more surround the, the use of the IRBs and the 100% tax abatement as opposed to the business and what type of business and, I mean, other than retail. So there's obviously going to be a lot of questions for me to ask behind the scenes rather than from you. I mean, I don't know, this is obviously new to, to our arena, we haven't done this with this commission, and we certainly haven't done it as a county commission for many, many years. So I would like to, you know, for us to do some homework, have our administration do a little bit of homework here to figure out exactly where this is going to go. The IRB itself, I mean, is there a dollar amount effect to that that you're, you're talking about?
Be the price of the, the project cost.
So the entire, the $2 million?
Yeah, roughly. I mean, until, not everything, I believe, is eligible for IRBs, but that's something I know, the Gilmore and Bell Law Firm has talked, talked to me about this, and they were actually been very involved. I think you've had discussions with, with them, and they were the firm that handled the last IRB project the county did, which was the, the company has the, oh, I can't believe I can't remember their name, the, the kitchen, the kitchen.
Crestwood.
Crestwood, thank you, thank you, having a senior moment here. But that was the last project, I believe, the county was involved in, so that's been, that's been quite a few years.
And they're not a retail, well, I guess they, no, they, I don't know. That is irrelevant to me right now. What I'm going to want, I'm going to want to do some homework here and, and see where we stand, what our obligation is with an IRB. I'm certainly pro-business, pro-everything, it's going to be an economic driver in Salina and Slayton County. I'm, I'm pro that all the way, but I, but I've got to figure out what the, you know, what the ramifications are if we say yes, or what, what happens when we say no, you know, how that drives things too, and figure out exactly the obligation of Slayton County here, and what it would mean down the road for potential other businesses coming to town and wanting our IRBs. So that's where I stand on it right now, so bottom line is, you're not going to get an answer out of me right now.
Commissioner, I didn't expect to get an answer today. This, this is more of a preliminary, you know, get to know.
Appreciate it very much, it sounds like an exciting business and, and you're, you're right, Kubota is an up and, up and coming brand, and, and we have a major Kubota outlet here, right here, or a manufacturing facility here in Salina itself, so.
Any other questions?
I want to echo the chair's thoughts too. I also am very pro-growth and, and I hope the best for your endeavor here. I believe that there's going to be a lot of city-county discussions here. I, you're within the one mile of the city limits where the city is going to have a lot of input into this project and, and it might not even be in our arena here for a while, so I wish you good luck on the hurdles and, and, you know, wish you success.
Just let us know what we need to do to keep moving onward and upward.
All right, appreciate you coming forward today, thank you very much, and as Jim said, good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move to action items.
Item number one is elder abuse awareness proclamation with Sheila Beeson, the sexual assault advocate, with D-VAC.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, Sheila.
Hi, thank you for having me today. Yes, so one of the services that we provide at D-VAC are services for elder abuse, and so we appreciate this time to be able to have this proclamation for Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas, hopefully everybody can hear me, sorry. Whereas, according to the National Council on Aging, one in 10 seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation and neglect. And whereas, abusers of older adults are both women and men and are usually family members, caregivers, health care workers, or other trusted individuals. And due to the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help they need. And whereas, elders throughout the United States lose an estimated $2.6 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and exploitation, such as illegal taking, misuse, or concealment, concealment of funds, property or assets of a senior or another's benefit. And whereas, too often, elder abuse threatens the livelihoods of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas, Slayton County's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas, we all have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending, ending elder abuse by assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now therefore, the Slayton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Slayton County, and urges all citizens to work together to help protect our elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Sheila, dear, are there, in light of the COVID and everything, are there any activities planned for this in conjunction with this Awareness Month?
Yes, yes, as you know, we've had to go pretty much virtual with our services at D-VAC. We are, our doors are still partially open, we are doing everything by phone, by internet, our shelter is still open, so if anybody needs any help, they can call us. But we do have, and I'll give those numbers, but we do have an online training that we are going to offer the community via Zoom on Monday, June 15, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And so if anybody would like to join, please call D-VAC. Our number, our local number is 785-827-5862, and then our toll-free number is 1-800-874-1499. And what we will do is provide the link for anybody to join. They can also get that link too from our Facebook page, D-VAC, or if you search for DVAC, D-V-A-C-K, or Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, you'll find our page. And we also have it on the Salina Journal Calendar, so we're excited to be able to offer that to the community, and if anybody ever has any questions, please call us, we'll provide support in any way that we can.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move we declare June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we declare June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Slayton County. Further comments? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion does carry. Sheila, I do have a signed proclamation for you here, if you want to come forward and pick that up.
Okay, if you'd like me to, I wasn't sure if we were mailing it or not with a virtual or if you think so, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you bet.
We'll move to item number two on the action items.
RFA 171-20, Salinsburg Road Culvert Replacement with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So this request for action is to discuss and take appropriate action on a Slayton County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for the Salinsburg Road Culvert Replacement Project. Sealed bids were opened on May 27 at 11:00 a.m. Three bids were received. You should have a bid tab in your packet, and there's got a little more details of each one of the bids. This project is located on Salinsburg Road west of Holmes Road. This section of Salinsburg Road is a dead-in road which leads to one farmstead and other agricultural property. The existing drainage structures are significantly undersized, which leads, which leads to significant road embankment erosion. This project replaces existing pipes with a 10-foot diameter steel pipe. You should also have us some pictures of the existing site out there, and you can see there's a lot of concrete rubble that's been tried to, to stabilize the bank, and a lot of it's washed out and, and failed, as you can see in the pictures. So there's, there's two alternatives to this request. One is to accept the bids as indicated in the staff recommendation, or two would be to reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept the bid from TNR Construction for the amount of estimated work equaling to $53,623.27. Funds for this project will be taken from the Two Mill Special Bridge Fund.
Justin, my, my first comment is, you know, I'm kind of, TNR has, has traditionally been a dirt contractor, moving dirt, you know, with scrapers or bulldozers or whatever, and to getting into the bridge construction business is unusual to me. I mean, I assume that we have, we would have someone on-site for department oversight as far as during the construction and all that?
Yes, that's with every project, you know, whether it was a bridge contractor or dirt contractor, we would have someone on, on staff. But where this project is, is, you know, we don't have any cast-in-place concrete, you know, we're really installing a pipe, which is very in line with what most dirt contractors can do, you know, so there's really nothing structural that the contractor's going to have to construct, and so I'm, I'm very confident that TNR can, can build this project.
So, and that brings me to that $15,000 for the steel pipe, 10 by 40 foot, is that the installation cost, or is that the cost of the pipe?
No, that's the installation cost. All of, all of the bid items, that, that's an installed product.
Okay, and then we pay for the product, is that correct?
No, no, that $15,000 includes the pipe and the installation.
Wow, I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, the others are $59,000 and $51,000.
Yeah, the, the difference in the discrepancy, or the, really the wide range of bids on this one, is the, the steel pipe is actually a railroad car with the ends cut off. You know, there, there's a company down in Oklahoma that, that sells this product, and it's a half-inch steel pipe, so it's a very substantial structure. And I installed one of these when I was in McPherson County, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with the process, but where it comes down to is the, two contractors, the two higher contract, the higher bids, they elected to rent a crane to pick the pipe up and install it in the, into the channel. up and install it in the, into the channel, as well as backfill it with flowable fill. I didn't have that requirement, the backfillable flowable fill, but they elected to do that. If you talk to the sales rep for the company that sells the pipe, you don't really need a crane. It's strong enough to where you can really roll the pipe down into the, down into the channel. You know, it hits and it bounces and it kind of shakes the ground, you know, for a second or two afterwards. But it doesn't damage the pipe any. And that was my experience when I installed it in McPherson County. And so TNR took that, took that advice, you know, that they don't need to have a crane to do that. And that's why there's the big discrepancy.
And as far as Saline County is concerned, for the entire unit project, the cost is $53,623.
Yes.
Other Commissioners' comments or questions?
What do you expect to see on the steel?
Oh, boy. 50 years. You know, it's half-inch steel. And I actually think that's the minimum that I require on this one. I think this one's a little bit thicker, you know, when you're, when you're recycling, you know, products, you know. For this one here is a railroad tanker, you know, it varies quite a bit. So I think this one's more closer to 5/8 inch thick, and so it's going to last a long time. I would say at least 50 years.
And a similar RCB project structured to accommodate the amount of water, we're looking at $65,000 probably.
Oh, it'd be more than that, you know. So if you put in, this is a 10-foot diameter pipe, and let's just say you put in a 10 by 10 reinforced concrete box, oh, boy. Yeah, that would be well over $100,000, probably closer to $150,000.
And this will be the first 10-foot tank tube that we have in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's not a good structure for every location, you know. But for this location, it's a dead-end road, very, you know, limited amount of traffic. It works very well.
Thank you, sir.
Is, on this here, and I know we wouldn't even be talking about this, but is there the big semis and everything else that would be able to go across this road?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it just has a, my second question is there, is this, when this went out for a bid, is there a reason why our county could not have done this?
There's
Is that a timeframe thing?
There's a timeframe, yeah, because it would, I think it would take, take our crews a lot longer, you know, than someone who's very familiar with, you know, that's a contractor. And a timeframe is very important on this, because while the existing structure is removed and, you know, until the new structure is installed and backfilled, that one farmhouse and that family, you know, they can't drive to their house. They can't drive out of their house. And I've worked it out with the landowners there that they're going to park some vehicles on the other side of the road, you know, and they're going to walk that quarter-mile or so, or, you know, they could ride an ATV, you know, down to the project site, walk through the project site to their vehicle. And so timeframe is going to be very critical on this. And I made that very, very aware. But also, just the, the slope protection work on this, you know, is going to be very critical to the success of this project. You know, they're, we're going to reuse as much of that broken concrete that you see in the pictures there, reuse that, and set it back on the slopes and grout it, kind of lock it all in with concrete. Our guys can do that. I think it would just take significantly more time.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of time, what is the timeframe? I mean, they would start and finish and...
The, yeah. So I've got it to where they can't start until July 15th. And so, and this was, these are working those dates out with the landowners and the person who farms the agricultural ground. So, yeah, so they can't start until July 15th, I believe. I'm thinking off the top of my head, and they have to have it done by the end of August.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Are there any public comments? Seeing none? Is there a public comment?
Yes, sir, there is.
I'm a certified crane operator. I have questions.
Your name, please.
Norman Manal, Salina. I'm a certified crane operator. I have questions about your installation methods.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for the Salinsburg Road Culvert Replacement Project to TNR Construction as requested by staff.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 171-20, Salinsburg Road Culvert Replacement Project to TNR Construction. Is there any further comments? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Mater.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We will move to item number three.
RFA 172-20, Workforce One CEO Agreement with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator. So this item is an agreement that is required for the 62 central and western Kansas counties to be a part of the Local Workforce Investment Area One, better known as Workforce One. This agreement is part of what forms the Chief Elected Officials Board, which then appoints the Local Workforce Board that administers the programs of Workforce One. This agreement is a successor agreement to an agreement that Saline County previously entered in January of 2016. That agreement expires by its terms on June 30th of this year, and Workforce One is requesting renewal. I'd be happy to go into more detail about the Workforce Investment Act if the Commission desires. But the alternatives for action are to approve the agreement, which would provide Saline County with the opportunity to be represented on the board, should you so choose, as well as provide for continued operation of the Workforce One programs, or to petition the Governor to designate us into a different local workforce area. Staff recommends that the Commission approve the attached agreement and authorize the Chair to sign.
All right. Are there questions or comments from Commissioners? If not, I assume that what we're doing today is agree to do this. We're not appointing a person as yet. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is just the agreement. But you would have the ability under the agreement to appoint somebody if you so choose. I think there, of the 62 counties, there are maybe a dozen to 15 that actually appoint someone. So not every county does that.
All right. Other comments or questions from Commissioners? Is there any public comment? If not, I would take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Local Workforce Development Area One CEO Board Agreement.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 172-20, Workforce One CEO Agreement, Local Workforce Development Area Board Agreement. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. The motion does carry. Four to zero. We will move to informational items. Item number one.
Review of CIP and EIP requests.
Good morning again, members of the Commission, Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator. So this is part of our continuing preparation of the county budget for 2021. We discussed operation and technology improvement requests with your Commission at a special meeting on May 27th. Today, I have the capital and equipment improvement requests to present. The Sheriff's Office submitted eight EIP requests totaling $315,274. Road and Bridge submitted five requests totaling $721,738. The countywide capital improvement plan fund has a balance of, or had of the beginning of this year, a balance of $7,681,415. There are eight projects that are projected for completion this year, and in addition, $2,035,794 is reserved for projects that have been approved in prior years but have not yet been completed, leaving us with an available balance of $3,510,621 for new projects. That, of course, does not include any money that we choose to budget for transfer to capital in the 2021 budget, or any carryover money that we would roll over into capital at the end of the year. So I anticipate that that available balance would actually be higher than that. That's the minimum that would be available. $1,370,500 in project requests were received for 2021, and $3,842,000 in requests for the succeeding four-year period. The county actually has three other capital improvement funds in addition to the countywide fund. There's an Expo Capital Fund, which accumulates rent off of the K-wood land. That has a balance of $156,878 at the beginning of this year. There's a Noxious Weed Capital Fund, which had a beginning balance of $71,891. There are no projects identified for either of those funds. And then the Health Department Capital Improvement Fund had a beginning balance of $222,040. There are $8,500 in project requests for 2021, and $25,149 in future-year requests. The requests are listed in your packet, and I would be happy to answer any questions or take any direction from the Commission, and look forward to going forward with the budget and presenting the full package to you all next Tuesday.
Questions from Commissioners?
Are we getting the nuts and bolts of this right now?
I'd be happy to.
I looked at the improvements at Expo Center 2021. You have $219,000 earmarked there. Looking at the 2020 budget, the Expo Center upgrade had $1,350,000 earmarked to be spent in 2020.
Mm-hmm.
Is that $1,350,000 still on the table to be done pending an agreement with the, with the city?
Yes. So this is a really good question, Commissioners. So in previous years, the Commission has put money away for future improvements at the Expo Center, not sort of knowing what those were going to turn out to be. So there is $1,003,000 roughly that is still there. There's been a little bit of it on architect fees, but in that range, that is still in that $2 million in carryover funding. Now that we are where we are, honing in on a contract with the city, Rick Lamer has priced out and scheduled out the improvements that he believes will be necessary to meet the terms of that new lease agreement, and believes that that totals up to about $671,000. Has that scheduled for the next five years, which would be consistent with that lease. So anticipates $219,000 in 2021, as you said, and then the balance in the succeeding four years. But that $1.3 million does remain available. So there are alternative ways to look at that, right? One is, you know, Rick's estimates at this point are pretty rough. We have not gone out to bid, so it's entirely possible that it will end up costing more than $671,000. So we have a contingency amount that we could certainly spend more than the estimate if needed, because we've got an extra million sitting there. The other alternative is that at some point, when these improvements are completed, or when we have final bids, that money will be available to be repurposed for some other project.
That $1,350,000 reflects back to the $7,681,000 that, okay.
Yeah, that's part of the balance.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? At this time, Phil, you're looking for what from us?
Any questions? I think Commissioner Lisa's question was a great one. Any other direction, if there are any of these projects that jump out at you as, we don't want to do that, that would be helpful. Otherwise, I will plan to proceed forward with these being the basis upon which we do a capital project for the next five years.
Well, I'm guilty, I guess, of not having looked at this too much beforehand. So, I mean, I'm not...
Well, and I will say, we also, I mean, we will have multiple opportunities to revisit this. We're not adopting a budget until August. So this is just the first blush at this, and I'd be happy to provide additional detail or answer any other questions.
Well, at this time, I mean, I'm happy to tell you to go ahead and plug these numbers into the budget process, or whatever you're, from your end of it, with the understanding that we're going to revisit this and take a harder look at it. There are a couple of things that jump out at me a little bit, but I want to do some research on them, as opposed to just saying yes or no without having any documentation in front of me.
Certainly understand that. Yep.
So...
Consensus. He stole my line. Proceed and plug it in.
All right.
Agree.
Agree.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll move to item number two then, on the informational.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning once again. So I wanted to start off this morning by just talking a little bit about the special legislative session that occurred last week. What people were hoping would be kind of a one-day session ended up being two days, but the Legislature did adjourn for the year again. They ended up only passing one bill. They passed a series of amendments to the Emergency Management Act. That was the only thing that they actually got through both houses. And yesterday afternoon, the Governor did indicate that she had signed that bill yesterday. So that does set up a process both for renewing or affirming her prior emergency declarations, but also for any emergency declarations going forward, how those would be handled. It also puts some limits on some of the public health things that counties have handled in the past, but it doesn't really appear to affect where we are right now with COVID. So overall, you know, I think everybody acknowledged that the Emergency Management Act could use a little tuning up. So the Governor's comments yesterday were to the effect of, it's not perfect, but compromise rarely is, and it's better than what we had. So the, so we have talked a lot this year about an attempt at property tax reform that came up in the Legislature that was originally known as SB 294, and then...
up in the legislature that was originally known as SB 294, and then became three other bill numbers during the process. That did, as you may remember, that got passed at the end of the regular legislative session. The governor subsequently vetoed that. It did come up again in the special session, was introduced, but never made it off of the Senate floor. So that issue is, we believe, dead for this year unless there's another special session for something. And, you know, of course, we'll monitor that for next year. The other thing, not directly related to the special session, but while we are on the topic of legislation, is the Spark Committee. The Spark is the committee that the governor formed as sort of her recovery team. And in the CARES Act, which was federal legislation, they allocated funding to local governments. They only allocated funding to local governments of over 500,000 populations. So in Kansas, only Johnson and Sedgwick Counties got direct funding. So the balance of the money, $1.25 billion, went to the state of Kansas. And last week, the Spark Committee announced that they intend to dole out the first $400 million of that to counties. $350 million of that based on population, and then an additional $50 million based on unemployment rate and COVID-19 infection rate. So for Celine County, that means that we stand to get somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $10 million in this federal funding. That's really all we know at this point. We don't know what our requirements are going to be to get that money. We've heard that there will be a resolution that we have to bring before the Commission to authorize that. We don't know what our liability will be, because, I mean, these are federal funds that we're talking about, and, you know, will the state take responsibility for that, or will they try and shove that off on us? We don't know exactly what we're allowed to use it on. I had conversation with the deputy county manager in Johnson County yesterday, because they got their funding directly, and he said they are still trying to figure, you know, they've got $116 million bucks sitting in the bank, and they're trying to figure out their process. Spark indicated that they intended for counties that receive this funding to share it with cities and school districts within the county, which is great. I mean, I don't think any of us have any problem sharing funding with the schools or the cities. But how exactly that gets done is a significant question. Do we need to set up a committee to approve requests from cities and schools? How much oversight will the state expect counties to exercise on that? So KAC, the Kansas Association of Counties, executive team is scheduled to have a phone call this week with Cheryl Harrison Lee, who's the executive director of the Spark Team, and they hope to have more information out to counties soon. We have been told that the draft resolution will be coming out this week, but we've also heard that Spark's approval is not the final say. Spark's plan needs to go in front of the State Finance Council, and that meeting has not yet been scheduled. So how we will get the money, when we will get the money, and what we can do with the money, all remain up in the air, but we're tracking it. We do anticipate some money coming to Celine County and our local cities and schools. Two other things real quickly, just a reminder that I will be on KSAL this Thursday, and that you will have to deal with me for the next week, because the deputy county administrator will be on a much deserved vacation starting this Friday, and will not be at the next two Commission meetings. And just a final note, I finally made it to the Gypsum City Council meeting last night, so I've now been to all the city council meetings in Celine County. Be happy to answer any questions.
Doesn't appear to be any. Thank you. We'll move to item number three.
Commissioners' comments.
Anyone have anything? Item number four.
Announcements.
Anybody have any?
Well, under announcements, I would just say that I don't know if anybody read in the paper that the Tri-Vivers Fair Board will have a fair this year, seeing that, well, we will have a fair, so, just wanted to announce that again, so, it looks like that's moving forward, so.
Good deal. At this time, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.